...and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway-
Here.
Martin-
Here.
Lennon-
Here.
Piana-
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. In fact, we have a full house. Our next order of business would be the approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda this evening?
I would ask that we add to the agenda an item regarding the purchase of real estate on Livernoy.
All right, I will make that regular agenda item 7F, Livernoy property. Anything else?
Do we accept the agenda with the changes proposed?
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. We have one presentation this evening, and it's a very special one, and it's why half the people in the audience are here this evening, I believe. Our seniors, we have a very energetic and active and wonderful senior group, and they have done a wonderful thing for our city that we want to recognize. If you haven't been by the Coolic Center lately, drive by because you'll notice there's a brand-new electronic sign outside of the Coolic Center. I noticed it especially the other night when it was late at night and there was some power out. It really stands out at night. It's a beautiful sign, and the sign was purchased by our senior group. And so tonight, we on City Council would like to recognize our seniors and thank you for the wonderful gift to the city. I'm going to read the very brief proclamation that we've written on your behalf. "City of Ferndale proclamation honoring the Ferndale seniors on the occasion of their donation of an electronic message board to the Coolic Community Center. Mayor Dave Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's appreciation to the Ferndale seniors on the occasion of their generous donation of an electronic message board to the Coolic Community Center. The Ferndale seniors are a credit to our community, and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate their achievement." So, round of applause for the seniors. Is someone going to come up and accept? Are you all going to come up? As many as want to come up can come up. Our president.
Look at how cute they are!
I know, come on.
Come on, take her out of the house.
Come on out.
A newbie for a year.
Good year, that's good. Thank you.
Future senior, there you go. All right, so-
Let's let Crystal get her shot.
Yeah, we'll let her get her shot soon.
Without you, it's awesome.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much, seniors. Thank you, everybody. And Jeannie, Dan told me specifically, you're not allowed to put the messages on the board, I told you. Very worried about that. Thank you again. Our next order of business would be call the audience. Call the audience is 30 minutes now, more time needed at the end of the meeting. You get three minutes to say whatever's on your mind. Come on up and give us, if it's not on the agenda, because you would get an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that part on the agenda, come on up and give us your name and your address, or if you don't want to say it publicly, write it on the back sheet. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council during call the audience this evening?
Chair. Hey, Dave.
Dave Cottrell from 1610 Bowfield, this time, representing the Sierra Club Green Cruise. Hey, Daniel, Sierra Club Green Cruise is on this Saturday, August 11th. Join us in celebrating many forms of human-powered transportation to keep you and the planet healthy. This year, you can participate in our human-powered One Half Mile Green Parade on West Nine Mile, the Forty Mile Detroit Bicycle Ride to Belle Isle. I understand that Melanie really especially liked that one. We also have the Twenty Mile Ride to Birmingham. This is a attempt so you can bicycle to the Green Cruise if you are living in Royal Oak or Birmingham. We're having a route you can get to the Green Cruise by bicycle, or the Three Mile Family Ride in Ferndale. For this year, we have added a 5K walk in Ferndale led by Ann Heller and Sherry Wells. All events start from our Green Alley at the Withington Parking Lot in northwest corner of Woodward and then West Nine Mile. Look for the kids' climbing tower. In the Green Cruise Parade, we'd like more children and teens on bikes, scooters, rollerblades, wagons, and strollers for their future. Come to the Green Cruise in downtown Ferndale on Saturday, August 11th. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Katie, good evening.
Good evening. Katie Hirschberger, 750 West Maplehurst. Having endured the pleasure of another power outage, I know that DTE Energy made a presentation, I think, early in June about some of their plans for this area. And I know part of that was talking about building another substation over on, somewhere around Hiltons, on the east side. How would that affect the west side? I don't know if that question was ever asked or if there's any information, because apparently the power outages from the storms that went through on the Fourth of July did not affect that area west of Pinecrest until Friday. And it was a good part of that western, that west half of Ferndale and Oak Park that went out. Is there another substation over there that's responsible for that west side? Or is the substations that are here in this area in Ferndale responsible for that west side?
Let me, a couple things. Substations cover a large area, so a substation would cover more than just east Ferndale.
Yeah.
I don't believe that they told us specific properties because they were still in negotiation, so they didn't indicate where it would be, but a substation would be enough to cover not only Ferndale, but actually the whole surrounding area. And I'm going to, I don't know, April, if you heard from DTE today, I know you had a call in to see if there was any further explanation.
I did. I did call DTE again to ask the difference. I mean, obviously, we know the storm that hit on late or mid, was it late Thursday or early Thursday morning, we know that part, but there was a section that went out on Friday night that I'm waiting so they're going to give me an engineering report on what exactly happened to cause that. So, I know there was a question there. So, we're still waiting on that, and as soon as I know more, I'll make sure to get that information.
Well, I have no problem with throwing the food out and meat that defrosted. I cooked on the barbecue, so that all worked out well, but-
You didn't invite me over?
Pardon?
You didn't invite me over for a barbecue?
That's all right, I'm going to let that go. You can still come. It's still in the freezer, and I didn't barbecue well because I was doing in a hurry. My, the only concern that I have is the refrigerator started to frost, and part of my parquet floor is split. So, one section's split and there's no way to fix it, the only thing I can do is replace the whole floor, which doesn't make me happy. So, but I'd like to know if this future station is going to have any effect on the west side?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't know if this is a born boy, but the tree at 455 is Chesterfield.
The tree, you said?
Tree.
Tree at 455, what, Chesterfield?
He's just, he's come down. It was slated to come down years ago, but the neighbor wanted to have it keep come down and glugglug in the lawn. Parted branches have come down.
We can have our DPW take a look at that. April, I know she's right in the address down. We'll have our DPW go and take a look at that, see if it's on our property, private property, what we can do about it.
It's your property.
It's our property, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, we'll take a look at it. Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Elliot Broome. I'm actually here representing the Detroit Institute of Arts, and thanks so much for allowing me to have three minutes this evening. But I wanted to come and thank the mayor and the city council members for allowing the DIA to partner with the city of Ferndale for Inside Out this summer. If you're already aware, there are currently six works of art installed throughout Ferndale, reproductions from original, or of original works.
Don't steal them.
We've only had one, and this is now year three. Only one has ever been stolen, thank goodness. And then that one, actually, someone called and said they were protecting the space for the museum. Anyway, just so, just so you know, you know, we're at, as I said, the six different locations. We have several events that are planned also in conjunction with the Inside Out program over the summer. The kickoff for the four neighboring cities, which are Ferndale, Royal Oak, Quasen, and Troy. It's two nights from now at Leon and Lulu in Quasen, so we hope everyone can make it for the official kickoff. We'll have a free resident day for all of the residents of Ferndale. That will be on August 26th. Every resident, every household will have free admission to the Detroit Institute of Arts that day. On the 19th of this month, also with, along with your third Thursday, we'll have docent tours of the works of art here in Dearborn, so, I can't believe I said Dearborn, in Ferndale, who will be able to talk about the works of art. On the 29th, there will be a bike rally, and it will cover all four of the communities I just named. So, it'll start here in Ferndale in the morning, and then it'll move to each of the communities and end in the afternoon in Troy. It's a rally, though, so you don't have to participate in the entire event. You can do just Ferndale, or just Royal Oak, or Quasen, or Troy, or do them all. You know, your legs will be tired, though, at the end of the day, I'm confident. And then finally, and I was unaware of it, Ferndale has a vintage scooter club. So, there is going to be a scooter club meetup at the museum in the morning. Everyone will ride downtown, park at the museum, and then go on docent-led tours inside the museum to look at some of the works that we have installed here in town, but see the original works downtown. I have some folders right here that I'd like to pass out to each of you inside. There's just, you know, information on the museum, information on Inside Out in Ferndale in particular. There are also some buttons inside, which are our, the I-Hart DIA buttons that have become pretty popular. And if it is okay with you, I would like to also leave, I have a few extra buttons. May I leave those at the back of the room for any of the visitors here this evening?
Of course.
Okay.
I think our seniors love buttons.
All right.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you for all the great stuff going on. Appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is, these are items that we consider routine, and we enact them in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda. I will read the consent agenda at this time. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 25th, 2012. B is approval of the quote of $25,560 from Rhodes Welding in Ferndale to fabricate two leaf boxes and two bumpers trailer hitches for dump truck vehicles, and to charge the expense to the Vehicle and Equipment Fund, as submitted by DPW. C, approval to adopt the resolution for the city's request for reimbursement from Oakland County under the West Nile Virus Program. D, approval of Rec Pro Registration Software Annual Service Agreement between the city of Ferndale and RC Systems in the amount of $3,400. E, approval to reappoint Greg Pollica to the Police and Fire Board. F, approval to fill a firefighter vacancy, as submitted by our HR generalist. G, approval to fill a finance position. H, approval of the John D. License Agreement for Outdoor Cafe on the pedestrian alley. I, approval of the special event permit for the Big Green Egg Smokeoff on Saturday, July 28, 2012, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the parking lot behind Burler's Barbecue and Fireplace, located at 23245 Woodward Avenue. J, approval of the special event permit for the Big Brothers' Big Sisters Annual Picnic on Saturday, August 4th, 2012, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Martin Road Park. K, approval of the special event permit for the 2012 Funky Ferndale Art Fair on September 14th, 15th, and 16th. That's on West Nine Mile Road between Woodward and Plantavon, and on Allen Road between West Nine and West Troy Street. L, approval of the special events permits for the DIY Street Fair and the 5K, 1K Run on September 14th, 15th, and 16th on East Troy Street, Woodward to the Felvy Lot Brick Wall, and East Nine Mile Road between Woodward and Bermuda, along with the Felvy and Library Parking Lots. M, approval of the special event permit for the Ferndale Green Living Fair on October 6th and 7th, 2012, on West Nine Mile Road between Woodward and Plantavon, and Allen Road between West Nine Mile and West Troy Street. Well, we have a lot of events coming up, don't we? N, approval of the Hall Render as a temporary, approval of Hall Render as a temporary labor and employment law firm to provide additional services on a temporary basis to the HR department as needed. And O, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the council's finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Is there, is there any public comment on any items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, is there any comments, questions, concerns on the part of council on the consent agenda this evening? And if, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A, appointment of Mark Glenn to the Police and Fire Board for a term ending May 1st, 2013. This is an appointment of the mayors with the approval of council, and Mr. Glenn is here this evening, and so if we can embarrass you for a minute to just ask you to step forward and, we can publicly thank you for your service. You can introduce yourself briefly if you'd like, sir, and-
Good evening, council. My name is Mark M.R.K. Lasting of Glenn, G.L.E.N.N. I'm a new resident to Ferndale. I've been here since November of last year. I saw an opportunity in which to serve my new community in an area that I'm somewhat familiar with, and hopefully, with your approval, I'll be able to work with fine people such as Hugh Sullivan here and others to move forward in those affected areas, dealing with the purposes of the board, and of course, the police and fire issues that council deems important.
Thank you, thank you very much. And he's being modest when he says he's qualified for this. You don't, you don't have his resume, but Mr. Glenn was a former police officer, also a former city manager, supervisor of ordinance services, a manager of ordinance services. He has a long history of serving municipal service and police service, and certainly appreciate your willingness to step up and serve in this capacity. Any, is there a motion from council?
I move to appoint Mark-
Glenn?
I move to appoint Mark Glenn to the Police and Fire Board for a term ending May 1st, 2013.
Support.
Moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Any comments, questions of council?
Just a comment. I got a very nice recommendation from a former, former civil service board member and school board member, Rich Elling, regarding your service. She'll do a great job.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Piana-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Thank you, sir. Regular agenda, item B, is a consideration of a novelty shop ordinance. Derek Nillacord, you want to introduce that item for us this evening?
I'd be glad to, mayor. Good evening. I think as the city council is aware, almost over a year ago at this point, the city council imposed a moratorium over a uses similar to the ones defined in the current draft of the novelty shop ordinance you have in front of you. There was some concern over some requests made to locate the use within specific zoning districts in the city. There was some concern at the time over its relationship to the recently passed medical marijuana law, and how those two uses could potentially combine or impact certain zoning districts within the city. As part of that moratorium, the council recommended, or asked the planning commission to take a look at our current ordinances and make some recommendations or determinations of what we, if what we had in place was acceptable and usable for the city. So, the planning commission did do that. As part of that process, the planning commission considered several options. The first of them was, do we want to define this use and prohibit it outright in any specific zoning districts within the city? And would that be the appropriate direction to go to, or to go through? After looking at it, the planning commission and after having several discussions on it, determined that that was most likely not the appropriate use, or the appropriate direction to go in. The novelty shops as defined, the uses and the materials sold within them are legal when used in relation to tobacco smoking, and the outright prohibition of them didn't make sense to the planning commission, so they quickly kind of set that aside and moved on. They looked at the potential to define the use further and identified it as a special land use within certain zoning districts, which would add discretionary criteria, public hearings, and ultimately, a second separate review by the city council for any use that met that definition. Again, they looked at it and determined that that was probably not unnecessary, or not necessary, as a retail use, its intensity level was not any higher than any other retail, and that the criteria, if there needed to be any restrictive criteria, would be similar in all instances, and not necessarily different depending on the location. So, in, they set that aside, and then asked the city attorney and I to draft an ordinance that considered imposing dimensional restrictions in relation to the use, similar to what we do for adult businesses. In response to that, we did draft an ordinance, a proposed ordinance. It defined the use as a novelty shop, which would be included in the city's definition section. It identified dimensional requirements for the use. In this instance, it would be 1,000 feet from any similar or like use, and 500 feet from any public or institutional use, daycare, school, church. And in fact, it replicates in pretty closely to what we have to adult businesses. The planning commission did review that ordinance. They held a public hearing on it, and they discussed it at some length, whether or not it was appropriate. And they, they did have a hard time coming to any real consensus. They debated it at two or three meetings, and ultimately, after review of it, determined that a couple of things had changed since they originally started discussing. One was that the clarification regarding the medical marijuana law removed any possibility, really, that this would be or evolve into some type of combined use with medical marijuana storefronts. That was their first real concern and was set aside as they moved on. The second discussion they had was, did the dimensional requirements really help protect the use from being in inappropriate locations? And ultimately, they decided no, as far as the planning commission was concerned. The use with the dimensional requirements would not prevent it in any specific zoning district. It would still be allowed in the same zoning districts as before. And it was their opinion that it wasn't necessarily the distance from any type use, it would be a proliferation of this use, and that they felt that the market would dictate that, and that that wasn't something they necessarily had to be concerned with. So, ultimately, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, and at the end of the process, recommended that council not change their current ordinances. That the ordinances we have in place as far as commercial zoning and retail uses were thorough enough to protect against any of the downsides associated with any general retail use, and this is more closely associated to those, they felt, once the risk of the medical marijuana combination was removed, and ultimately, recommended to the city council that no changes be made. But again, that was, that was not, not something that there was overwhelming consensus for. Ultimately, I believe at the planning commission, it was a unanimous vote, but there was considerable deliberation on both ends of that. So, the recommendation from the planning commission is basically to do nothing, that our current ordinances are acceptable. Ultimately, that decision is up to city council. You can either accept the planning commission's recommendation and move on, adopt the draft ordinance as presented with the dimensional requirements, or modify the current proposed ordinance within, within reason, to address any additional concerns council may have. We would suggest if significant changes are made, that council consider remanding it back to the planning commission for revised public hearing, if there is some significant changes made. So, with that, I will leave it up to council to ask any questions.
Thank you, Derek. And you know, because Christine is here, and I know, I believe the DDA board back a year ago, or a little less than a year ago, also weighed in on this because it was potentially affecting them at the time, actually debated and voted on this. Christine, could you just briefly maybe tell us the conversation there?
And we were digging through our files. It, actually, the conversation started probably over a year ago with medical marijuana, and the discussion of the locations within the central business district, as well as the rest of the DDA area, which consists of both CBD and C2 areas. The, more recently, it was probably this past October, we had a discussion that it was coming before the planning commission. And going through the notes, actually, we didn't make a motion at that time, because what was presented was what was being presented at that time for the planning commission, and most of the board members were pretty, pretty satisfied with what was being presented to the planning commission. So, they didn't have a whole lot of issue with what was being presented. They liked the idea of the limitation with it. So, but going back to the medical marijuana, they were, they were absolutely against allowing for distribution or any type of retail outlet or presence within the DDA area, that it would really impact the commercial presence of our downtown area, as well, because of the quality of business that generally follows with that. And I think that when we're looking at the conversations that happen, what they are looking at is really, do you want this to define your commercial district? And across the board, none of them wanted that to define their commercial district. We had a number of potential businesses that were looking to come in as things were unveiling, and I think that's what caused a lot of the commotion and the cause for concern. And even though market does generally, and I agree, market generally does handle things in terms of the types of businesses and how many businesses, but I do have to say, in terms of what I have seen happening with these types of businesses, and when they're walking in and talking about it, they're willing to pay any dollar. And that was a cause for our concern, as higher rents are generally in the central business district area. And if they're willing to pay the higher dollar, they'd be in the CBD, they're willing to pay any dollar to be in the area that will attract people, and didn't want that to define the downtown area. And I think that as we, you know, we're looking at this, we're a very open and diverse downtown area. We know that, and we want to be open and diverse to everybody, and products as well. But at the same senses, that we're still a community and a family, and we want to protect those who are within the community as well. But knowing that, there was not a motion that was at that point in time. We have not re-reviewed this at this time. And I would, I would suggest that, you know, just looking at the locations is always a great option in terms of the distance. I think that was something that we were supportive of. I know that in the past, there's also been ordinances in terms of the percentage rule, and that's actually in respect to our vintage shops. There's a percentage rule in terms, in terms of how much used materials you can have within the storefront, or within the store. So, I think there's flexibility within the law without prohibiting completely. And I know that that was the concern for the city, for prohibiting completely.
Thanks, Christine. Is there anyone from the public that has a comment on this issue before we open it up to council discussion and questions?
Sometimes you just can't shut me up, so sometimes it'll be rough if I stay home. When I was a kid-
When I was a kid, I know it was sold in a novelty shop because my parents owned one at one time. We sold penny candy. We sold sodas and milkshakes. We lived near a school and we sold specific books for paper for the school and pencils and erasers and kites. I have no idea what a novelty shop sells today. And I don't know what kind of business we're really talking about here when I mention novelty shops and medical marijuana in the same paragraph.
It's not kites.
Yeah, and I can probably clarify that. I mean, it was novelty shops and we struggled for a definition in working with the city attorney. I think what we're discussing, and I think everybody's aware, is what we commonly refer to as head shops. Shops that sell primarily, that their primary function is to sell tobacco-related smoking devices. Legal, but they certainly carry a certain connotation with them. And there certainly was some concern when they were first being proposed within the CBD. So I think for clarification's sake, that's that's what we're talking about.
Thanks, Derek. All right, council, other, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, yes?
Dave Cutrell from 1610 Bowfield. I'm just recalling, like, my concerns about the quality of stores on West Nine Mile between Pine Crest and Livernoy because we've been trying to upgrade that or pray that it gets better. And of course, the DDA is trying to make a improve the streetscape on there. But, you know, if you go by the economics of the market doing it on our, and that strip, you know, we've had, we had a production, a prescription pill, you know, drugstore that had an armed robbery. And we've had other businesses through the years that have not been in good repute. And it's talking to my neighbors on Bowfield, you know, we wouldn't want a, you know, medical marijuana place on on our street. And we're already suspect of some business, have been in the past suspect of other businesses on our street, so we wouldn't want to have it there. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, questions for clarification of council, otherwise a motion, but question?
I'd like some clarification on the the market, will take care of it, argument. The city of Ferndale, not too long ago, I think the business district was defined by wig shops and nail salons. City of Ferndale is the only community that I know whose main street has two CVSs, a Rite Aid right around the corner, two 7-Elevens, two Taco Bells in it. So the market doesn't seem to be too good at weeding those multiple uses out. We can look to Eight Mile for, you know, undesirable type businesses that are clustered there. Why did the planning commission seem to think that the market, which doesn't take care of these market failures, is going to somehow address the head shops?
Very simply, because that is an absolute truism and to this day still currently, we don't have one, even though they're permitted in every commercial district in the city. Being an absolute permitted use, similar to all of those uses and being allowed under the same circumstances to move in without any additional site plan approvals or special land uses, the city to date does not have a quote unquote head shop in it. They felt if, under those criteria, we don't have one, that even even if we were to get one somewhere in the city, and the ordinance as drafted would not permit or prevent a head shop in any district in the in the city, would only prevent the second one from being located a certain distance from it. That there was not an overwhelming concern of the planning commission that we were going to have the same kind of intensity of this use as we do those.
Questions or clarification?
Correct. You indicated that under the definition today that we don't have one, but we do have businesses that do sell these type of products.
Correct.
Do we, so this, the dimension restrictions proposal based on some line in this definition would not impact those existing businesses and that activity that goes that they have today?
Yeah, for two reasons. One, it's if it was, the primary use was sale of these type of utensils, which we don't have any evidence that any of our current businesses, that their primary function is the sale of these type of this type of materials, this ordinance wouldn't apply if their primary use was something else, tobacco sales or anything else, where this was just an accessory to some other type of primary use. This wouldn't apply. And two, in in review of the uses we have right now, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, if we do have any that fell under that primary definition, they would be considered existing non-conforming and allowed to continue in perpetuity. It would only be ones that would come afterwards, that would have to meet the dimensional requirements from those uses.
Christina also mentioned that last year, there were several businesses who were pursuing this in the city. Have those interests fallen off and are there, is there anyone currently interested?
We had two zoning determination requests for this type of use approximately a year ago. That's what generated the concern and ultimately the moratorium. And since then, we have had no additional requests.
Oh, we had a moratorium.
Quietly expired. Correct, correct. And then the, I guess my last statement would be I, well, I guess I have more than one. Sorry. The, I thought the documentation in this, by the way, was fantastic. The map, if you look at it, clearly shows that even with the restrictions, there's retail space available for this type of business on Nine Mile, it considered it on Woodward, Livernoy, you know, much of the the current commercial district. So by passing a dimension restrictions clause, it certainly wouldn't prohibit any of these businesses from coming, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, another one? No? Right now, I'm good.
So essentially, if if council wanted to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission, which is to do nothing, then, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Chris.
No, Dr. Chris, Mr. Chris. Then, hi, doctor, your honor, whatever works. No action would be required because that is the current ordinance. But if we wanted to do something different, that would require some sort of a.
Correct, your honor.
I have some comments to say, but I'll wait till the motion is made.
And I guess, I'm just going to say, because I can't make motions because I would, and so this isn't exactly a question of clarification, but I'll just tell you that for me, I do have some concerns with an overproliferation of these sort of businesses. And I like the idea of modeling an ordinance similar to the adult novelty, I don't even know what.
Adult business, correct.
The adult businesses with the with the spatial requirements. And I like that because I know these are legal businesses. I know that there's not, this is not an illegal activity. But I think that Ferndale has effectively balanced its nightlife with its community orientation, I think to Christina's point. We are both a place where people go to play and also to raise their kids. And I think that always requires us to strike a balance between the two. And I personally am more comfortable with a restriction on the number and spacing of them than than allowing the current ordinance. So that's that's where I I would be, but if I could make a motion, I would, but I can't. So it really is up to council.
Well, I I concur with you, mayor, and I would make the motion, but I can't seem to find in my paperwork.
Yes, currently, mayor, if I may, there's a pointer for clarification. There's a there's a motion in there that's based on the planning commission recommendation that states not approve. I believe the same motion would work if it was just switched to approve.
I move that council, or I move that city council approve the amendments, amendment to section 4.02, 5.02, and 19.08, and the addition of section 8.26 to the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 1087 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances to define established criteria for retail novelty stores within the city.
And by the way, someone should get a picture of Councilman Lennon reading an iPad.
I couldn't make it big enough.
Support.
It's been moved by Lennon and supported by Galloway. All right, now, all comments, questions are appropriate.
I am the city council liaison to the planning commission, so I was involved in the discussions with the commissioners for both meetings. And I fall in the camp of the general recommendation of the planning commission, feeling that the appropriate protections are currently in place now, that we do have businesses selling legally items of what would be of a novelty shop and that the proliferation of shops is zero and that it may change or one or two. But I think the appropriate review process that we have inside the city with the community development department, it may be permitted by right. However, I think that the guidance that we have by our city staff and the DDA can help landlords deal with those types of applicants as well as make sure that they are following appropriate legal, appropriate laws. I also feel that this was brought to our attention under the leadership of the interim C manager and was based off of pressure with the medical marijuana law that sort of got clarified and which was causing a lot of the concern. So this is where I stand, supporting the planning commission decision. I also wanted to let you know that I did check that in-flight on Oak Park and it is 200 feet from a church on the Ferndale side. Just wanted to let you know.
Other comments, questions?
I would just want to say that I I don't want to stop any of these businesses from opening. I don't have a problem if one comes to Ferndale. I think that's just totally fine. You know, and I certainly don't want to impact any business selling these products today that we've got. So I'm glad to hear there's no impact there. I just don't have 100% faith in in the pure market to govern this. And that's where I think a little bit of guidance from council on this matter would help. And that's why, you know, I like this ordinance and I'm going to, this amendment, and I'm going to vote yes.
I agree with you, Dale.
But I want to be clear, it's not to deter people from opening businesses here. You know, I don't care if one opens up. I think that's fine, you know. I think some level of control and guidance is appropriate, though.
I mean, just to provide a little context, do we have a definition of what a current adult business is as it's subject to these relations? I mean, it's.
Yes.
And what is that?
Well, we do have a definition. It's semi-lengthy and we do have a set of criteria related to them. In short, currently, the this type of use, the head shop, would be just considered general retail, whereas the council has, for very specific reasons and similar to other communities, provided a specific definition of what an adult business is and then additional criteria for its approval in the city. The ordinance that's being reviewed and was reviewed by the planning commission is very similar to those those two definitions and criteria established as far as the dimensional requirements.
The dimensional requirements are about the same, right?
Correct, they're exactly the same.
They're exactly the same. And we have one adult business in the city right now?
As far as I'm aware, yes. I think there's only one, which we would define as a primary adult. There's other businesses that have materials that would fit within that definition, but not as their primary function or their primary use.
Just to be clear, the lengths we're talking about here is 1,000 feet between businesses and 500 feet from a school or church?
School, church.
1,000 feet from one, a business to business and 500 from church and school.
Correct.
That is a radius, correct, there?
Correct.
1,000 radius.
Yep.
Can see the map.
And just to sort of provide further context to this, the criticism of a dimensional variance is that, or a dimensional requirement is, the best place for it might be within that 500 feet or within that 1,000 feet, even though it doesn't strictly comply with the law.
That is sometimes the unintended consequences of of dimensional requirements being written into an ordinance is there may be a location that is 460 feet from what is in, within the definition, considered a restricted space, an institutional church or school, but may ultimately be the perfect location and the desired location for a use like this. Whereas the ordinance now has specifically prohibited that, or 960 feet or 800 feet from an existing, and may actually force them to go in to look into areas where it's less. Now, that's unintended consequence, that could happen with any ordinance. It's certainly not a reason not to consider it or the dimensional requirements. And I want to be clear again with the planning commission, and I don't speak for them, obviously, the record does from the minutes, and Ms. Piana was a part of all of those meetings. There was not unanimous consensus. They did see some value in the dimensional requirements, even though they're legal products, they are age-restricted project, products. Most of them, they're associated to tobacco, which is age-restricted, and that's where the dimensional requirements came. Same thing as some of the adult businesses, where there was an age involvement, where you want to keep it away from children who are underage and out of having multiple uses within family districts. So there was not an overwhelming consensus. Ultimately, the recommendation was to do nothing, but I don't think it's an issue where the planning commission was 100% in consensus behind it, so.
And I've got a question to Mike. Mike, was there, was there ever one of these shops in town? Was the white?
Camborne and Woodward.
Camborne and Woodward, right?
Royal shoppers.
All right.
Upstairs. That's what I heard.
Okay.
As you know, well, no, plus we had a school along the 10-mile road.
Right.
And Woodward Avenue.
Additional comments or questions of council?
As an option, I think that if the city council could consider the dimensional here, if you didn't want to, you know, if you wanted to change it from permitted as use to having these dimensional dimensions in there as an option. So allowing them, but putting restrictions on how much space you can provide inside the store selling those items. So you would, you know, they may sell t-shirts and other novelty items that aren't related to head shops.
I'm sorry, can you clarify that? You lost me a little bit. I apologize.
Maybe Derek can explain it better, but you can set the percentage of a square footage of the store, of the retail, to sell only like 10%.
So as opposed to an external?
Yes. So instead of 100% of the retail space dedicated to novelty items, it only can be 10 to 15%. And we already offer that with.
Used products at Block Prosper and stuff.
Yes, some other, some other retail.
Yeah, even the, for an example, the adult business criteria, to establish adult businesses, the principal use as an adult business, over 20%, I believe it's over 20% of the floor space, has to be used for those type of novelties. Planning commission did consider including that as opposed to just saying primary use. Some of the problem with those floor space restrictions is they're very difficult to enforce. When they first move in, they may conform, but then they expand and then the question becomes, what do you do about it? How do you police it from this point forward? Ms. Steph, go ahead.
To the chair, if I may, wouldn't in today's, under today's ordinance, if we adopted this, if a store had 25% of the square space dedicated to these type of products, it still wouldn't be considered a primary use and we would still consider that appropriate, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, usually a use and there is some level of determination made by either staff or the planning commission when you don't specifically define it. Just because a use only takes up 15% of the floor space does not mean it's not their primary use. It can be done by sales, it can be done by a lot of different ways. And with a use like this, where the products or the things we're talking about take up a relatively small amount of space, you could very easily take up 80% of the floor space with other retail sales and still have this product be the primary use of the store. Usually, staff in the planning commission makes a determination, and if the applicant disagrees, it's incumbent on them to prove otherwise. When you put strict dimensional or or square footage, you basically have said if you submit a floor plan that shows only 19% of your square footage is used for this, we're required to permit them at that point. And it does have a tendency sometime of tying our hands and making that evaluation.
All right, thanks. Well, there is a motion on the floor now that was made by Councilman Lennon, supported by Galloway. I guess I'll ask if there's any further comments or questions on that motion. Then, Madam Clerk, I guess we call a roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
No.
And, sorry, Lennon?
No, mayor.
Did I already call you? The mayor called her, I'm sorry.
Or you let me?
I will let you mayor.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted, that ordinance is adopted. Thank you for your work on that, Derek. I appreciate it. Our next item of business, as I go back and find my agenda, is another ordinance consideration, consideration of pet boarding facilities ordinance. And Derek, this is the Derek Yellicourt Show tonight, so you're up on that one as well, right?
Yes, sir. Again, very similar to the previous discussion in relation to some requests that were made to staff regarding the allowance or the approval of pet boarding facilities, basically doggy daycare in the city of Ferndale. We discovered that the city ordinance currently does not permit doggy daycare, pet boarding as a standalone use within any districts in the city. It does allow. It does allow some kenneling or boarding to take place as an accessory use to either veterinarian or dog grooming facilities, but as a primary use in the city, it was not allowed. Planning commission asked staff and the city attorney again to develop a draft ordinance to consider allowance of the use. We did. We defined the use, established some proposed criteria for it, and then actually proposed an ordinance to the planning commission that would allow the use as a permitted use within the city's two industrial districts. The planning commission held considerable amount of discussion on it and reviewed the ordinance, and as part of that process, evaluated some of the other zoning ordinances within the city, including office service, our C2 and C3, and our MXD2 uses, and ultimately requested a draft of that ordinance that would allow the use as a permitted use in both industrial districts, and then as a special land use in those other districts. We did, the planning commission held a public hearing on that ordinance, and ultimately recommended approval to city council as that ordinance was drafted. It does establish some criteria for the use, including that any outdoor play areas must be 50 feet from any residential unless otherwise waived by the planning commission. It does establish some screening requirements. If city council, they're identified in the packet. If you need us to, we can go through each one. But basically, defined the ordinance, established criteria for its use, and then the zoning districts it would be allowed in.
Derek, did they actually approve that, or did they actually not approve it, given the number?
For clarification, let me clarify. The vote was five to one in favor of the amendment as proposed. There was one dissenting vote at the planning commission level. The planning commission rules of procedure, there was only six members at the planning commission that night. That is the minimum necessary for a quorum of the planning commission. Based on the rules of procedure for the planning commission, a minimum of six affirmative votes is necessary to recommend any resolution be approved by council. So through a technicality, technically, the planning commission did not recommend approval of the motion, but the motion was voted on five to one in favor of the ordinance amendment as proposed. In discussion with the city attorney, it was determined that because the planning commission is only a recommending body in this instance, that the motion could be forwarded to the city council with the clarification that there was five to one affirmative for adoption. Thanks, Dan.
Can you sort of clarify what the definitions are for grooming, kenneling, and 40? Just to be clear on those.
Well, grooming is primarily the use would be that dogs, for the most part, were there for a day or less, and was not, were not there for any extended period of time, primarily just to be boarded, that the operation involved, obviously, the cleaning or care of animals. And obviously, there's some amount of boarding that goes on in association with that, but not as a primary use. Kenneling, on the other hand, or pet boarding in this facility, the primary idea is that you bring your dog or your animal, you drop them off while you're on vacation for an extended stay, whether it be three or up to 30 days in this draft, that that's the primary function of the business, is to house the animals.
And doggy, doggy daycare is when you drop them off and pick them up at the end of the day?
It can be the day, it can be a short, shorter-term stay. The difference really between doggy daycare, as it's, you know, generally referred to in kenneling, is kenneling tends to be an outdoor operation for the breeding or housing of large amounts of animals. The doggy daycare, and as the pet boarding is drafted here, is more of an indoor operation, up to 30 days max. So there is, there is boarding that goes on for more than a day. The planning commission did consider several lengths of time. I think the original proposal was, I believe it was no more than seven days, I would have to go back and check. And discussion from the planning commission, they determined that up to 30 days was what they recommended as being acceptable.
Let me also ask at this point, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this item?
Barbarterio 805 Allen, I have three dogs, and I think that that would be a good thing to have pet boarding in this Ferndale, because I go away sometimes for two weeks, and it would be nice to know that my dogs are taken care of properly in a boarding facility. Doesn't have to be outside, because I have seen the ones where they have pet lips where they're inside. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So what is the pleasure of council?
Well, I just wanted to inform everybody that I was the dissenting vote. I don't always agree with the planning commission, and even though I've been on it for a short period of time. But I wanted to be very clear about why I voted no. We are very supportive of having doggy daycare in Ferndale and finding the appropriate place. So it's basically the same discussion we had on novelty shops, applied to the doggy daycare, where they should go, and thus protecting the residents, but also allowing new businesses to come in and flourish. And so for me particularly, it was the second part of the recommendation. So the first part is that the commission allows the permitted use in M1 and M2, which is Lightton and General Industrial. Where I had some issues was in the mixed use and office, which these properties are along Libranoy and Nine Mile, but their backyards abut to people's residence, homeowners' backyards. And so this is the discussion that we had at the planning commission, is how close are all these dogs going to be to someone's backyard? And if you're there during the day sunbathing, having a great relaxing time, are you going to have, you know, 20 or 30 dogs outside playing behind you? And I felt that as a special land use, as a special land use, that would still allow some oversight by the city, but do we even want to entertain that? And so I felt like that's why I voted no. I was not on the same page as the planning commission of allowing it, but putting restrictions on it so that it can be vetted. And I feel like that's a conversation that I just don't want to have, and say 20 to 30 dogs. So I'll talk more a little bit about it. I did not meet with the applicant and have a tour of their facility, but I can tell you more about that on the, on the motion floor.
Well, to keep things moving along, I would move that council adopt ordinance number 1129, amending sections 4.02, 5.02, 602, is it 6.02, and 19.09, and adding section 8.25 to the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 1087 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances, to define and establish criteria for pet boarding facilities in the city.
Is there support? Well, I guess point of clarification, because that, I'm not clear in that motion, does that include all of the uses as established by the planning commission?
Correct.
And it's my, if we bring it to the floor, council can change the policy to either keep, obviously you can vote for and keep it, or you can make adjustments to the policy so that the special land use either can be removed. And so that is our, up to our purview.
Dan, would you agree with that?
Well, yeah, it depends on the nature of the motion.
Yeah, you do, but...
I agree with the motion, but yeah, to the extent that you wish to modify the actual text of the ordinance with respect to a particular special land use that you don't wish to see, that's certainly prerogative of council.
Well, I believe the same way Meloni does. I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of the restrictions, and I like to have it in the M1 and M2, but I'm not in favor of the mixed use, and the C2 and C3.
And so I think if I'm hearing Dan right, we can support Scott's motion and then amend it or change it to, to strip out the other uses.
So I will go ahead and support the motion as it's...
So moved by Galloway, supported by Piana.
So through the chair, if I may, to talk a little bit more about this. So the applicant reached out to me via email, invited me to her business down in Detroit, and I took her up on that opportunity and got to see all the happy little dogs playing during the day. Actually, it was at the end of the day, and owners were coming to pick up their dogs. So I got to see how they deal with security, not only with the homeowners, but also with the dogs in the facility. She runs a tight ship and really cares for all the dogs, and what I communicated is that we would love her business in Ferndale, and that this ordinance is for all businesses coming in, not just hers, because not all businesses may be up to the standard of operations that she, she is. And I know that my neighbors love doggy daycare, and if I had a dog, I would want to take him to a doggy daycare too. So I wish they actually had doggy daycare when I was 12. So that's kind of where I am. I really didn't understand what doggy daycare was. I, I'm a cat owner, and so that's why I went down there to really see how it worked. The dogs are really managed according to doggy daycare rules. It's just like kindergarten. You get playtime, and they go outside for two hours and get to play, and then they come back in, and then they rest, and then they go back outside for two hours and play. I didn't realize it was that well-managed and maintained. But at the end of the day, I'm really here looking for, you know, looking at our homeowners, and they may love dogs, and they may be okay with that with, as owners now, but if they sell their home down the road, that may, you know, lower the price or value of their home because there is such a facility behind them. And so I felt like the permitted use was, again, something that I wasn't in favor of. I'm sorry, the special land use was not something I was in favor of. And we also did look at setback rules, so a certain amount of space in the backyard, about a, what, 100, was it 150 feet? What was the setback?
The setback is 50 feet from any residential property as proposed.
Oh, yeah, so the setback of 50 feet, and I still felt, dog bark, dog barks travel more than 50 feet.
I mean, Derek, so many of your recommendations that come to us from the planning commission say, you know, we've got this, we could, well, the last ordinance, the novelty shop ordinance, that, you know, it could be a problem, but we don't really need this extra ordinance because there's other ways to deal with it, appearance, review, different things. Do you have any thoughts in that regard to this recommend, or this non-recommendation from the planning commission?
Well, this right, is a recommendation. I mean, it's, due to a technicality, the motion failed, but the planning commission throughout this entire process felt very strongly that pet boarding in some capacity should be permitted in the city, and the ordinance needed to be changed to reflect that. They felt that the city is, considers itself to be very dog-friendly, and that in the appropriate districts and with the appropriate criteria, that this was a use that needed to be established and further defined in the city. The debate took place, as Ms. Piana said, as to what districts were most appropriate. And again, there was, there was considerable debate. Ultimately, they decided on this, this set of recommendations to council. And there was some significant debate on the dimensional requirements. Original, we had 100 feet from a residential district, and that was just a starting point. That was based on the size of the parcels generally associated with the industrial districts, could allow 100-foot setback. The chair of the planning commission pointed out, if they were going to permit it in some of the other zoning districts, that because of the size or the average sizes of the parcels, that 100-foot setback would in fact be prohibitive to most of those properties. So we went back and reevaluated it and made the determination that if they were going to recommend inclusion in some of those zoning districts, that the setback would need to be reduced to 50 feet. So that's, that's how the recommendation you have in front of you got here. But unlike the previous ordinance, there was always a very strong feeling, I believe, from the planning commission, and I think the record reflects that, that this, the definition of the use and the allowance in some capacity was a good idea and well-supported.
Through the chair, if I may, I think with the special, the special use, you know, you're saying that there could be great owners, great doggy daycare owners, and you want to vet, and there could be bad ones, and you want to vet them through that process, through the special permit process. But in this case, my opinion is you can be great and you can be not so great. I don't think neighbors still want 20 to 30 dogs in their backyard, and that's why I'm sticking to that position.
But, I mean, if there's a problem with barking, as has been brought up, doesn't the sound ordinance apply to them the same as it does Rosie O'Grady's?
Yes, it would. Might be a little more difficult to enforce because of the sporadic nature, potentially of the noise. But I believe, and we discussed the same thing, that the sound ordinance would apply. I'll look to Dan to correct me if I'm wrong, but it would apply in this instance as well.
Enforcement's an issue, but yeah, it would apply.
You could even also get a, have a dog barking ordinance. A lot of cities have that too, but I don't think we have one.
I think we do.
Yeah, we do. We have a dog barking ordinance.
You can't bark longer than 15 minutes.
We write tickets all the time on that. We had L control.
Yeah, I, most of these facilities are self-contained inside?
Most, most are, for the most part, inside, but they do all generally have some kind of outdoor run or play component that's utilized several times during the day.
The one in Detroit that I visited was quite large, and looks like a great place for dogs to play. If I was a dog, I want to be in it, if I was going to be watched all day. But at the end of the day, I think that's just not the type of a use I would want to allow. The other, my, another issue that I had that isn't related to our ordinance, but is more of environmental concerns, is the disinfectant of the backyard dog run. And one of the cleaning procedures that is standard, per my understanding, for the industry is that they pour bleach onto the rocks and rubberized whatever type of treatment they have in the backyard. And I felt like pouring bleach in the ground right behind a neighbor's house wasn't something I was also willing to do, if that was standard operating procedure.
But it's not right behind, it's 50 yards minimum, right?
50 feet.
50 feet, 50 feet, sorry.
I'll just say, for me, this isn't even a difficult call. I appreciate the work of the planning commission, and I agree with them that we ought to allow these in the city, but they belong, in my opinion, in the industrial area. 50 feet to a home is too close. One dog barking 50 feet away can be very annoying. 20 of them would be, I think, unacceptable. There's a reason why we don't allow these at all right now, and that a lot of cities don't, and I think it's business-friendly of us to consider allowing them at all, and I think in our industrial and area, it's an appropriate use. But, but for me, 50 feet from a, from a residential area is, is just too close, so...
I also want to be very clear, and something that the owner down in Detroit kept reminding me is that nobody wants to hear incessant dog barking while they're working in her business, and so they really do manage barking, and they don't allow to take in excessive dog barking. But I just want to make sure that that's not the environment in which a dog, doggy daycare facility is. If you allow them in the industrial, you're not going to have incessant barking inside as it's, you know, as they're operating. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
So for me, I would, I would not support the amendment, I mean, the motion as is, unless we figure out a way to word it so that it strips out, it returns to the original ordinance as drafted by Derek and the economic development folks, and stripped out the commercial and...
So can we offer an amendment to remove the language as a special district, as in as a special land use and MXD2 mixed use?
Would that do it? And I see you raising your hand, Derek.
Yeah, just a couple of things, I want to be very clear. Even with the 50-foot in the industrial districts, we do have some industrial parcels that do abut residential. The amendment as proposed, or the elimination of the other district, would vastly reduce, greatly reduce, the amount of occasions that that takes place. But there are some industrial parcels that do directly abut residential or across the street. So you wouldn't eliminate it completely, but I would venture to say a hefty portion of it would be eliminated. And I think if you could just, I'll let the city attorney ask.
I think that the comment of the mayor was that he would support a motion, or an amendment to the motion, which also eliminated the special land use provision in C2, C3, and OS, which is also currently by, so I don't think your proposed amendment goes quite as far as the mayor at least would like to see.
Okay. Then I'll amend my amendment, that we strike the language as a special land use and MXD2 mixed use OS in C2, C3 districts.
We're striking those. Striking those.
And that number is...
MXD and C2.
So what the motion would stand, and then we just have to adopt the amendment.
Okay.
So there's an amendment, there's an amendment offered by Councilman Martin that would require a support.
To strike 402 and 6.02.
Yeah, to strike, special land use and MXD2 OS, which is office service, and C2, C3, general commercial districts.
Okay. It's 40, 4.02 and 6.02 would not be included in the...
Correct.
Yeah, each...
Correct. Yeah, each, each district doesn't have its own number. They're all included in table 4.02. So you can't eliminate the entire section 4.02, only the uses as additions to that section.
So the correct motion would be to move that we, that we lead the, um, motion that was made by me, however, indicate that, um, this will not be, uh, allowed as a special land use in the MXD2 OS, C2 and C3.
Correct.
That's, that's sufficient.
So that motion to amend was made by Councilman Martin.
I'll support, yeah, I'll support that.
Supported by Councilman Lennon. So we have to vote on the amendment first. Is there any further discussion, questions on the amendment, the Martin amendment? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The amendment is adopted. Now back on the main motion, the, the Galloway, Piana motion. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none. Um, and, you know what, I'm sorry, Katie, you've been standing for a long time.
We did public comment, but you, you've been very patient.
Having had dogs in my house for probably most of my life, um, kenneling and boarding dogs is a very tricky business. Uh, number one, the minute some dogs, you let them outside, no matter what's around, they bark. Uh, some of them bark inside. When I took care of my brother's dog, I live at least a hundred feet off of Pinecrest, she would bark at every car that went down Pinecrest. I had to board up my windows so she couldn't see any car. Um, so the barking and getting it only into the industrial areas, I think is a good idea. I think that whatever facility comes in, there needs to be some sort of restriction on how many dogs they can house at one time. Uh, especially when you're talking about letting, you know, six or eight or 10 dogs out to play at once, you again will get a lot of barking. And even in an industrial area, because an industrial area is going to have an office and somebody trying to do paperwork. And if you have two, four, six, eight, 10 dogs barking and playing, it's even going to disrupt a, a business. But I have no problem with the, the boarding thing, especially if it stays in the industrial area and maybe we can give, uh, office workers your phone or something.
Thank you, Katie.
I did want to make one last comment.
Yes.
Um, they all start off as grooming facilities and then they move, go into boarding and doggy daycare. So my point here is, is that by allowing it in the industrial district, we are allowing businesses to really grow and not put further pressure onto any of the homeowners in the backyard. Um, and that's, that's really the end goal, is allowing these businesses to grow.
Any further comments or questions? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
This is on the original motion?
As amended.
To adopt.
As amended.
As amended, as amended, yes.
That is correct. Galloway?
No.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Uh, moving on to regular agenda, item D, consideration of a resolution for on-street bike parking and... Christina, can you introduce that item, uh, Madam City Manager?
Uh, thank you. Uh, back in May, the DDA launched its first on-street bike parking location, uh, right in front of Western Market. It was a pilot project, uh, with, uh, a traffic control order allowing us to, um, to install that. Uh, we had the police department and TIA review the, um, the, the layout and the floor plan for that park, um, that space for the, uh, for the bike parking. And as most of you know, or if you don't know, uh, bikes generally are supposed to be drive, uh, riding in the travel lanes, uh, not on sidewalks, which actually are prohibited within the downtown area. So it is actually more appropriate to have them pull in off of a travel lane and park on street as opposed to trying to get onto a sidewalk and then navigate people on the sidewalk and, uh, customers and doors and everything else that might be within a sidewalk area. As well as we have a lot of limited space, uh, on our sidewalks as it is. Um, many of them have five feet of clearance and, um, some less. So, uh, in order to encourage and, and get more options for different type of parking in our downtown area, uh, move away from, uh, motor vehicles and get to bicycles, uh, more and more, our on-street, uh, bike parking spaces allow up to 14 parking spaces for bikes, uh, which is, uh, could make a huge dent in terms of our parking in our downtown area. And we're seeing great success with Western Market, used all the time, very busy. Um, and what we are proposing is that there is a, a, more of a long-range plan that the DDA has put together to install more on-street bike parking spaces. Uh, this summer, we would like to install five more, but I did put together as part of the resolution, the, the full plan, all the locations that we have identified. We've identified the locations based on traffic, uh, based on, uh, the fact that there might be a on, uh, sidewalk, uh, parking, um, uh, station there, but they could really accommodate a much larger parking space, um, for multiple bike racks. Uh, so places, um, potentially like, uh, near the Emery, uh, which we do already have a couple of bike racks in that area, but as you can tell, on many nights, there is overflow all over the place. So, uh, and as part of the resolution, this would then be an annual thing, uh, looking at April 1st through November 15th, uh, really, uh, taking in consideration DPW's concerns with snow removal, making sure they're, they're up the flow of substantial snow flies. Uh, it also times in well, uh, with a lot of our installations for the holidays. So we can, as we're installing the holiday decorations, we can pull all those things out at the same time. And the DDA does plan to store those on their own property. Um, and, uh, the DDA is planning to do this installation, the first five, uh, on our own for this year, uh, through the DDA's budget. So really what we're looking for through the resolution is approval because it's a right of way. The council needs to, uh, approve that, uh, which is expressed through the memo, uh, as to why, and, uh, hoping that you'll support that.
Okay. Um, anyone from the audience who could address this item? Counsel, uh, questions or a motion?
City.
Either would be appropriate.
Uh, I move to approve the on-street bike parking, bike rack parking resolution as submitted by the DDA Executive Director, authorizing the Ferndale Downtown Development Authority to place bicycle racks in the city's public right-of-way at on-street parking space locations as defined in the resolution on an annual basis from April 1st through November 15th.
Support.
Mr. Mayor. Your honor, I don't know if you want to restate the motion, but, but in reviewing the material, several of the, the particular proposed locations are identified on Woodward Avenue. And I think it may be appropriate to have that resolution, uh, provide that for those locations on Woodward, that it also be contingent on obtaining MDOT approval as well. I know Christina in her material suggested that was going to happen, but it shouldn't really be part of the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be a friendly amendment.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment. And where do I want to insert it? Um, so, uh, when do I want to place it? Um, why don't we tack it on at the end? As defined in the resolution on an annual basis from April 1st to November 25th, um, and, uh, with the appropriate MDOT approvals for, uh, bike rack locations located on the, uh, major corridor.
Woodward Avenue.
Woodward Avenue.
Still support.
And still support, fine. All right. Now, discussion and...
I guess this was a question I had before. Um, our DDA director indicated that, uh, riding your bike on the sidewalk in the DDA was prohibited, but it's not prohibited unless there's a traffic control device, of which there is not. Is that correct?
That's correct. They were removed a while ago.
I see the police chief coming up and he might be able to clarify this for us. Chief?
There, there are no longer a, uh, prohib, prohibition of riding bicycles on the sidewalk in the central business district. It used to be by sign, but no longer is that prohibited. It could be again with the traffic control sign, but there is no currently any, uh, prohibition on that.
It was removed in the early...
Long time ago.
Like in the 2000s or 90s?
Oh, I think in the 90s.
In the 90s?
Yeah. I, I don't know. Is there still one on? My understanding, they've all been removed, but, uh...
Um, I would like to, I'd like to segue that into a comment that I had, um, that took this, um, not for this topic, but for the city to focus on. It wasn't part of the city council's goals for 2012, but it still should be part of the, the planning goals of the community, is that this is a short-term fix for a, a long-term plan of fixing a non-motorized access and mobility in our downtown. Um, when we passed the complete streets policies in November 2010, it was, uh, the next step was getting a non-motorized plan. And we're going through a master plan update next year, um, and we need to find some money to help pay for a non-motorized plan. That would sort of give us the big framework and treatment of where we need to make investments and policy changes on improving our, our bicycle network. And so, um, that's sort of where I'm sort of seeing where this is going to segue into a, a, a longer-term solution for us. Um, for, because I don't understand why we need to have a traffic control order, um, for every time we want to put in a bicycle facility improvement. To me, that's, we should have a policy, stick with it through the non-motorized plan and let's just go. Um, so...
Not to be the fungo governor again, but...
Fung governor. Fung destroyer.
Is that, uh, part of the TCO process was to make sure that where we put these are in a safe location, that we vet them
Right.
Uh, through the traffic control officer. And that's, uh, part of the resolution was is that, uh, these would be, uh, under review by the police department. The police chief was designated for, and for our purposes, only for safety. So there are places where they would be safe and there are places where they may not be safe. So to have some type of review process at the front end, um, by us.
And a non-motorized plan can help sort of figure that out before we, um, target those. So that's the planning process.
Any other discussions on this?
Just to be clear, so this, if you install five locations, we'll lose just five parking spaces, correct? On-street, this goes as on-street parking?
Oh, it's on-street parking. So it would be...
We'll lose five parking spaces.
For the summertime, but you would be gaining
Right.
As for one, you get hopefully 14.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to commend the DDA for, for making this happen. You know, cyclists are customers and it's just another way to go, uh, go, uh, you know, use businesses and services and go eat. So we're providing another way for customers to access our businesses.
There's a lot of great examples nationwide. And, uh, so we're really, you know, we're kind of stealing from what other communities are doing in Portland and, and Traverse City and all over the place. So, um, I think that, uh, you know, this is a, a movement in the right direction for our community. It also addresses a secondary issue in terms of parking as well, uh, during our busier season. So I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, I think it's a, a natural course that we should be taking at this point, so.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, I guess I'll ask Madam Clerk if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Uh, regular agenda, item seven E is a consideration to use the American Legion parking lot for special events and public parking. Uh, City Manager, is this you tonight?
Yep. Um, a couple of the goals of the parking committee is to start to look at other options for parking as we're trying to, to address the demand. And one of the conversations that have come up multiple times is the, um, city owns the American Legion, um, which is located on Livernoy. And while we're working on a redevelopment plan for that, um, there is about 18 parking spaces that are there and available. And it is, uh, very close to the downtown and where people travel. So one of the things that we had talked about was looking at, we could create that parking lot and mark it as free parking to encourage people to park, which again, 18 spots means something. And as we're talking about the, um, you know, on-street parking with bikes, again, trying to add as many parking spots as we can. So with that, um, at the same time, we were starting to get some requests of being able to use that parking lot during special events and things of that nature. So again, it's freeing up space. Um, a lot of people, it's not marked, so there might be some people who take advantage and park there. But by marking it, it actually sends a signal that you can park here. We encourage you to park here. Um, of course, following, you know, the appropriate rules. So, uh, talking to Attorney Chris, he indicated that it would be best, even though that we own the property, just by resolution, to, to have council's approval on using this parking lot for now, um, until we figure out what role we think this property is going to play. So with that, we respectfully request to be able to use it as public parking for free as well as with our normal parking lots' ability to use it during special events, just as we would any other parking lot.
Uh, are there questions of clarification or motion on this item?
I move...
Oh, hang on a moment. I will start with public comment.
Okay. Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy. I am pleased to see this come up on the agenda so quickly. Uh, as one of the people on the Green Cruise Committee, when I was circulating the, uh, notice to businesses and residents, there was one business that said that its parking lot was being used by our vendors and volunteers, which made me feel obviously uncomfortable. And that's when I discovered the American Legion parking lot and thought about that. So I guess I'm not the only one. And for us to notify our vendors and volunteers that once you unload, this is where you park, then we'll have the downtown businesses a little more rightfully happy with the events. And I'm sure our, ours must not be the only event where you had people being a little rude that way. So I'm glad that we can give them, I would like you to vote to give them that opportunity. Thank you.
All right, counsel, um, any questions or a motion would be appropriate?
I vote, well?
Nope. I'm not getting, I'm going to make the motions for everybody.
I move that we authorize the use of the 1741 Livernoy as a free parking lot for general visitors and use by special events as requested and approved by the Special Events Committee.
Right.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Now, discussion, questions, comments on this item?
It's a no-brainer.
Good. It all needs to be said. Madam Clerk, I'll roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our next item is, uh, regular agenda, item F, which was added at the beginning of this meeting. And this is a, an item regarding Livernoy, the Livernoy property and, uh, Councilman Galloway, I know you put this on the agenda and this is also, I think, going to be another Derek Delacorte, um, introduction on Derek Knight. Um, but Scott, if you want to briefly state your motion or your, well, you, you can make a motion.
Well, uh, the thing that I'd ask be amended, uh, that the agenda be amended to include was, uh, consideration of the purchase of a tax-reverted property on Livernoy, uh, and off, from the county and authorization to conduct some preliminary environmental, uh, some additional preliminary environmental, um, inspections of the property.
Thank you. And Derek, you want to sort of introduce that for the public's good?
Absolutely.
And I, I will also mention, we had a special closed session at 6:00 PM where council discussed that the potential purchase of this property. So we have had discussion on this as right, uh, as well. And it was moved to put this on the agenda. So Derek, with that.
Sure. Uh, and quickly, I guess, to start, um, as part of council's goals and objectives this year, they identified the southern Livernoy corridor as a, a priority, um, for us and our department to consider as far as future redevelopment. Um, to that end, one of the things we've been, uh, looking at in addition to some other, uh, grant opportunities is potential acquisition of properties, uh, that, uh, may be developed in the future to, um, help facilitate that redevelopment and ensure that the development is in the best interest of the cities and in conformance, uh, with the highest aspirations of the city's master land use plan and zoning ordinance. Um, to that end, there is a property that is coming up at the county's first auction, um, in August. The address is 320 Livernoy. Um, the property is approximately a half to three-quarter acre, uh, mixed-use property. It currently has a vacant, uh, formerly-used industrial building, about 9,000 square feet. Um, it sits directly across from a couple of parcels that are currently owned by the city on Livernoy. Um, and we do think there is, uh, a potential in the massing of properties down there, uh, for the city to help facilitate, in the interest of the, the public good, um, the type of redevelopment it wants along that corridor and hopefully, um, potentially generate some interest and, and catalyst for additional redevelopment along the corridor. So this property was identified by the county. Um, it does go to first auction in August. Um, as council is aware, council has the ability to buy the property prior to first auction, uh, for minimum back taxes, um, and any other liens and interest on the property, uh, which as of today is approximately $68,000. Um, the property's SEV, the last time I checked, was, I believe, a hundred and 20-something thousand dollars. We went to check before the meeting, but currently our internet's down, so, uh, we had a hard time re, rechecking. But, um, certainly it's undervalued compared to the SEV. But certainly it's undervalued compared to the SEV or the appraised value of the property. The city is in the process as well of selling a couple of surplus pieces through a sale process to a couple of private developers that would help offset some of that cost. So in those discussions, if council wanted to move forward, what would be necessary is a motion approving the City Manager and any other appropriate staff to finalize a purchase agreement with the county for an amount not to exceed, I would probably recommend 75, but I don't think it's going to be that much. Again, it's minimum, what the county has, is owed to the county. And then potentially, as part of that, we have 45 days after that purchase to do initial environmental. We have engaged an environmental consultant to do a Phase 1 initial investigation. If the city were to move forward with the purchase, we would recommend following through with a Phase 2 and a baseline environmental assessment, which does provide liability coverage to the city under the Michigan Brownfield laws. We have 45 days to do those. Estimate on cost with that would be another, no more than an additional $15,000 for the additional environmental. So those would be the two motions to consider tonight, and obviously, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Motion would be in order before we can have discussion?
I would move that council approve the purchase of the reference lot on Livernoy by the city and authorize the mayor to enter into a contract not to exceed $75,000, and for the city, following that purchase, to perform the baseline environmental and Phase 2 at a cost not to exceed 20, $15,000.
Second? It's moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. All right, discussion on this item?
It's just a good investment on our part.
And I guess I would say, because again, council's had the benefit of discussing this, but for the public's benefit, there is a significant piece of property on the south end of Livernoy, and Derek, I'm just going to paraphrase very briefly what you said, but it's not the city's intent to get into the buying and selling of property, or it's not our intent even to make money on this property. But what we can do is, in an area of the city that we've identified that we would like to redevelop in a specific way, which is the south Livernoy corridor, we can take this property that could otherwise be bought by a speculator or somebody that would use it for an industrial use, which is, we no longer think is the appropriate use for that piece of property. We can secure this for a fraction of its worth and make sure that it goes to the kind of development that we're looking for. And that's the opportunity here. It's not our intent to keep it very long or to use this sort of strategy to make money. It's to help redevelop south Livernoy in a way that we think will be beneficial to the city. And so that is why I'm supportive of this, but I just wanted to sort of explain that for folks in case they're wondering why we're buying a piece of property.
Well, in addition to that, I did, you say you also had somebody that had already looked at it?
Well, we, I mean, obviously, there's, with any piece of property like this in the city, there's been several parties who have discussed this and other properties along the corridor and expressed interest in them. So we do think the potential is there to work with quality developers in some type of partnership or development agreement to ensure the type of development the city wants to see along that corridor.
And our purchase of the property at the north end of Livernoy turned out very good. We got extra parking out of it and maintained some flexibility should, you know, plans for fire station or different things materialize, so.
I am supportive of this purchase. I think it's the right leverage point that the city can do to help rejuvenate an area, and it's been in the master plan for a while, which is helping improve the corridor along Livernoy, and I think it's a step in the right direction. And it's definitely not putting us in a risky financial position, knowing that we have buyers already knocking before we've even bought. So...
Madam Clerk, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Derek. Our next agenda item would be called to council. Chief Collins, anything further from the Police Department this evening?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Chief Sullivan, anything from the Fire Department this evening?
Nothing this evening, sir.
All right. Jill, is Jill still here?
She's out.
Sorry, okay. Derek, any, could there possibly be anything left from your area tonight? All right, thanks. Cheryl Lynn, I guess, from the Clerk's office.
Certainly. Today was the last day to register to vote, to be qualified to vote in the August 7th primary. I just wanted to say, in Ferndale, having residents register to vote is not an issue. We have very healthy numbers of registered voters. Our problem is getting people to turn out. So I'm going to encourage everyone to show up to vote. This is a primary election, which means you will be choosing, in the party of your choice, your candidates to be on the November general election ballot, plus in a non-party race, you'll be choosing a candidate for the Sixth Circuit judgeship. And there are two bond proposals for the Hazel Park Schools. There are two bond proposals for Oakland County. We have two precincts in Ferndale that are in the Hazel Park School District, so it's important that people understand that those issues are on the ballot. Those do not go forward to November. All four tax proposals that are on the ballot will be decided on August 7th. I encourage you to find out what's on the ballot. You'll be selecting U.S. Senator, State Ref State Senator, all the county offices. Please get informed and show up to vote.
Well said. Mrs. Lynch? I like saying that. Anything from the City Manager's office this evening?
I just want to acknowledge the staff and the resident effort over the last few days with the storm that occurred on July 4th, which I'm starting to see a habit forming on when we have our storms. It seems to be on holidays. So a couple of things have happened. Chief Sullivan is no longer allowed to leave on major holidays, because that seems to be an obstacle common denominator. So with that, I do want to acknowledge, though, not only our residents for their patience, but the amount of staff that turned out to address not only the power outage, we had a lot of, both police and fire had to stay over, DPW had to come out again on a holiday weekend to remove trees, to address flooding, barricading streets, the Kulik Center staff opening up 24/7, all the volunteers that came out to help with the heat issues that we were having. And then a combination of kind of working through, our first time with the CERT team, that even though they're not fully instituted, we called them. And I definitely, I think both Chief Sullivan and I and the Fire Marshal recognize immediately how, once this program gets up and running, how valuable they will be to the system. But we had City Hall staff come out and help with the Kulik Center, City Council help, residents come and help. Again, we just truly appreciate all of the effort and time that went into the July 4th storm, which I can now add to my resume. So thank you. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Dan Christen.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Martin?
Two things. I just want to second April's comment about how well the staff and residents did rallying together. It was really a tough situation, but a really good thing from a perspective to see the commitment of the residents to the city and the staff to the work they're doing. I really appreciate that. And secondly, to second what Cheryl Lynn said, there is an election coming up August 7th. I think one of the more interesting races on the ballot is our County Commissioner race. There is a candidate forum for County Commissioners coming up this Thursday, 7:00 PM here at City Hall. As you may be aware, the districts for the County Commission were reduced this year, and we, two sitting County Commissioners now are up for election in Ferndale. County Commissioner Craig Covey and County Commissioner Helene Zach, and they will be here on Thursday. So please tune in, come on in to ask questions and to get to know your candidates. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Councilman Martin?
Just, I really have nothing other than a big thank you to April and her staff, police, fire, DPW, everybody involved. Marvelous job.
Thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
Well, I'm going to bring out the shimmer hands, and that's my visual representation of, I'm echoing what everybody's saying about the praise for the power outage. It's something we do at work when we agree with everybody, shimmer hands. And so I just think it's awesome, the response that we did. And we're just getting better at learning how to work with all the new staff who are part of the response, response to emergencies. Couple of things, just wanted to announce that the alternative analysis for the Woodward is kicking off this month. So the 15-month whole process commences this week, and you'll be hearing more details about the public engagement process. And that's one of the first elements that comes out of this 15-month, and about a month and a half, two months, we have to show the federal government that we have a public engagement plan, and then we will be implementing it over the course of 12 months or so. And then the Woodward Avenue Action Association also kicked off their Complete Streets, and they're doing a master plan, a Complete Streets master plan from Detroit to Pontiac, and so we're also involved in that. And that is a parallel project also with public engagement outreach. And so we're trying to figure out how to coordinate the two so that we don't have public engagement fatigue over the next 15 months. So that's one of the eyes that I'm keeping on towards, in my role representing the city. And of course, we're going to need all of your voices as we go through this, so you'll be hearing more from us.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Galloway?
To follow up on a couple of comments that have been made at the table already regarding the election, a couple of the things that I'm focusing on are the judicial races as an attorney, and also the proposal to support the DIA. I think both have a tremendous ability to influence our community, and, you know, it's something you should educate yourself about. For a minimal amount of support, we can maintain a world-class institution. People should educate themselves about the proposal to support the DIA and see if that's right for them and their family. And then, when I was the Chair of the Ferndale Democratic Club, we always held judicial forums, because I think a lot of folks don't really understand the races or who's running and the importance of it. And I think one of the things that's interesting for me is, this year, aside from the usual slate of prosecutors that are out there, we have an individual who's, you know, uniquely qualified to understand issues with the city, that face cities like Ferndale, because he's been around here, and that's our own Dan Christ. So again, something you have to educate yourself on, but certainly, there's a little bit different face on the ballot this year, and I hope people take a look at it. That's it.
Thank you, Scott. Sure. Well said. Thanks. I just had a couple of them. Just a couple of things. I'm not going to use shimmer hands, but I am going to quickly thank all of the staff, especially, everybody did a great job, but I'm going to embarrass April because she was around the clock. She hadn't experienced a 24/7 Kulik experience until this time. Everything worked really, really smoothly, and I know you give credit to everyone else, and they all deserve it, but April, really appreciate all the, all the help that you did there. Secondly, some sad news tonight, unfortunately to announce that our own Councilman Martin officially went over the hill and turned 40 on Saturday. Sorry, Dan. Sad.
All right, imagine.
And finally, I just want to thank the residents, the residents who came and showed up tonight, the residents who watch us on television. We don't do this enough, but I appreciate your participation in our democracy. And so thank you for coming, and see you next time. And with that, meeting is adjourned.